Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, September 19th, 2011. This evening, City Council is going to meet in a public hearing. And then when that is over, we will move on into a regular session of council. This is a public hearing to discuss our ODOT proposal for the Athens Transit System. Mayor Wile.
Okay, this is required public hearing for our operating grant money for the bus system. We do this yearly.
Essentially, I think I gave you each a copy of what the budget will look like for the oncoming year. This is the operating budget. We apply for the federal money and state money for the operating of the bus system, Athens Transit. If you look at it, I think the total cost, budget of the operating costs will be about In terms of how much we're going to get, if you're reading it, it's going to be about, let's see if I can find it real quick here. Federal's about $230, so that's $300 and change, I think. About $95,219. So about $316,000 of the 560. We're going to do a few changes as well. Just so you know, of course, this is really a financial aid for elderly and disabled riders. The current bus system operates between 7:00 and 7:00 PM. Monday, Friday, Saturday between 9:00 and 5:00. Fares are $1.50 for one-way. Elderly, disabled ride for $0.75 one-way, and children under six can ride free. Again, this is part of the grant, the federal grant, Section 5311, federal transit laws. Some of the things I do want to bring up in terms of changes that we'll be putting forward here. A couple of things occurred in the past few months. We had some technical assistance from ODOT to add, to look at our bus system, see if we can improve it. This is a free technical service. One by name Carla Lakota has been in charge of that. She's done a little bit of study. She's brought up some points that she feels are relevant to talk about or actually look at. We are also up for our renewal of our grant with McDonald's. We have McDonald Transport who actually services our bus system or does our operation. We have a contract with them, and it's been there for about three, four years, and it's telling them to put out another RFP, I think three years. So the idea is to cast net again and see who wants to operate our system. Some of the things that Ms. Lakota discussed was that we really should be looking at a better system in terms of following, getting incentive. The way we're structured now, we have very little incentive to increase ridership from McDonald's point of view. So we want to change the structure of that. The other discussion was whether we want to stay with a fixed route system or door-to-door on-demand system. The conversations with her was such that for the ridership that we have, we probably would go better with a door-to-door system. At the same time, I'm loathe to, we're not going to discuss changing that now. This is just the application, but in the future, this way, we want to change some of the systems. We'll probably change some of the routes, too. If you look, Summit on Coast Run and University Courtyard are serviced by their own bus systems. One by the university with courtyard, McDonald with the summit. So therefore, we have two loops that go up to each student complex. The ridership, of course, is less because they've already been serviced. So we might take those out of the loop. Again, that's really not the purview of the public hearing this time. But some of the other changes we will do is we'll probably restructure the RFP so we can take better accounting of our traffic, our bus ridership. We are actually, also, we are discussing taking the grant administration out of our office and putting it over to another organization, another nonprofit. We put out a RFQ for that, Request for Qualifications, sometime in the summer, to various organizations. The only one that really nibbled on it was HAPCAP, Hockey, Athens, Prairie Community Action. They are the ones that run our Go Bus right now. They also run the bus system in Logan. Again, what you're seeing from my point of view is that between myself, Charlene, my executive assistant, and the bus transit people, Darrell, those are the eyes on top of it. I'd like to see a better supervision of it, and outsourcing may be the way to do that. So there will be some functional behind-the-scenes changes. Again, this one is just to apply for the grant, for the monies, and as I say, you have in front of you the budget. So I'll take any questions at this time. I'm sure you have some.
Let's start with the public first. This is a public hearing and really an opportunity for council and the administration to hear the public comment. If there is none, then we'll go to members of council. Yes? Can you come up?
This is for any topic, right?
No, this is for what?
This is just on the, this is a public hearing for the Athens Transit System.
And anybody who hasn't signed the sign-in sheet, there's a sign-in sheet over here for a public hearing. If you can distribute that once more, just so we know that it was actually public here.
Okay. Members of council. Chris.
Yes, Mayor Wile, the fare box revenue, is that in the budget? This is part of what will be classified as our cost sharing?
That is.
Or is that still up for negotiation?
The fare box is actually subtracted from the actual operating cost. If you look at the, let's see. Okay, if you look at the, anyway, it says fare box revenue under B, line B, that's $40,000. And you can see it's actually subtracted below from the operating cost. So we go from $480,000 to $440,000. Interestingly enough, our fare boxes haven't changed that much. $40,000 seems to be where we're at most of the time. We increased, if you remember, two years ago, the fare from $1 to $1.50. The conversation goes, and I went over to Chillicothe to check how their bus system works. They have the same federal basis. They operate their own system. And you can see it also with the Go Bus. The fare box is such a small component in terms of revenue, it might behoove us to drop it down to $1 someday again. But I want to look at the, and this is why I want more eyes on what we're doing, because I think HAPCAP could probably come up with some suggestions. So it hasn't changed that much. It's usually about $40,000 to $42,000, I think was last year. See if I have the numbers on that, too. Is that actually a question?
That does, thank you.
Okay. Other questions, I guess, is up for.
Member Coon.
I'm just curious, at what age do you become an elderly person and qualify for the $0.75 fare?
You're there, Sherry.
I assume it's 65 or 60, but I couldn't tell you what it is offhand.
AARP seems to think 55 is the magic number for some reason.
Yeah, so, you know, I think, I have assumed it's 65, but I might be wrong on that.
Paul, a couple of questions. When you're looking at a total budget of over $500,000, and really revenues coming in the fare box, I'm seeing $43,000, maybe I'm looking at a different number than you are.
Oh, no, you're right. I'm looking at the 2011, sorry.
Certainly less than 10% of the total operating component.
Yes.
Now, I know bus systems are not supposed to make or even break even. They're not supposed to make money. They're kind of like municipally operated swimming pools. They're not supposed to make money either, but you need to do both, have them if at all possible.
Okay.
And seeing a lot of people that can stay in their home a lot longer if they do have decent transportation. I know it really provides an incredible service to Beaumont Green, and I used to have staff come to Hickory Creek on the bus, and those kind, and spouses of people that are in the nursing home get to visit because we had a bus. So, you know, it provides an absolutely essential.
Yes.
Service for people. The concept of going to a door-to-door, I'm not too sure wouldn't even service better. And I really hope that we do take a good, hard look at that.
Yes, there was, I got an email from Mr. Lockman. He's been looking at our bus system quite a bit. He's a grad student who's actually spent some time looking at our service, looking at how we coordinate our bus system, actually putting on a layer, map layer on Google. So if you want to go from point A to point B by the bus, again, with our anemic bus system, it'll draw you a map, like in many bigger cities. So he's actually incorporated that what we'd see normally in a bigger city. Really, what's, with Ms. Lakota was looking at is saying she's trying to compare other cities, and she says for the density of ridership we have, most of our systems go into a flexible system rather than a fixed route system. What we have is a fixed route system with diversions. In other words, if you're, if you, you know, can't get to the bus station, you can call up 24 hours ahead and say, "I'm going to be, I need to."
Go take that.
Yes. Well, it's in a three-quarter mile of the route. So that covers quite a corridor between our routes. And that's it. That has actually been picking up more over time. The diversion part is actually been increasing over time because of more people aware of it, they want the door-to-door service. So it's actually getting more difficult to make the routes in an hour, which is, it should be easy, you think, just going from one end of the city to another. So the way you do it otherwise is you build a, and I've talked, again, Chillicothe, I had a long discussion. I took a tour of their mechanic's place and had a great old time. Didn't talk to everybody I needed to talk to at the time. But what you do is, of course, you have the regulars who go to work using the bus system, and you build your diversion flex system around them. So in other words, you know between nine o'clock every day, somebody's getting on their bus over point A, and then you start drawing a map to point, to point B over here with all these routes in between. Takes some managing. I know they were talking, Chillicothe's talking about buying some software that'll do it. Right now, they're pretty much doing it by hand and map, it sounds like. But they're investigating software that'll function that way. I don't, the downside of that is you lose the expectation, the timing. In other words, somebody says, you know, "I want to get on the bus, and I know the bus is going to come by at this time."
Yeah.
What I'd like to see in the next, this is the operating budget, next capital budget, what I'd like to see is a little bit more diversity in our buses. In the past couple of years, we've gone to all one-size bus. We used to have that van.
Yeah.
And I think one of the questions that arose with the consultant was, are we truly a diversion system? Because some systems say they are, but they aren't. But, you know, from our documentation, they are, because we spent some time making sure that documentation is placed. McDonald has done a good job of that. Some of the other issues we have is that because McDonald's actually servicing Summit on Coast Run, they use our facility to service air buses. So at this point, we charge them a minimal amount, I think $200 a month, but we need to hike that up. I put that in as a starting point because when we got to that discussion, it says, "Well, you can't be using our public service, you know, our area, but I'll start low, and we're going to have a discussion this next round on what the cost will be." And we might have to go to, we have a similar system, how much cost we get out of Lakefront for the Go Bus. We may use that as a benchmark. We may do some studies, say, "How much time do you actually, does your mechanic spend on that bus and not on that bus?" You know, the private entity versus the public entity. So we've got some playing to do. And again, this is why you're talking about myself when I'm not doing other things, Charlene, my executive secretary, when she's not doing other things, and the Lakefront Management, which is, of course, on the other side of the table. So that's why I'm kind of rooting for the HAPCAP to take it over if possible, at least the management of the grant.
Is that going to increase administrative overhead costs?
It will. If you were to compare, it will go up about, let's see, what I was looking at last, was last year's one. General administration, that first column where it comes to A, this is on Form M3. Last year, the general administration was $50,000. We expected to go to $86,000. But I think the concept that that's going to be a short term, because one of the conversations we're also having with HAPCAP, and about how they operate the Logan system, is they have contracts with other nonprofits. In other words, development disabilities systems, their senior systems, where they actually use that as a, as contract, they contract out the service. It fits in the charter that's required for elderly and disabled. It becomes part of the local match at that point. So in other words, rather than us spending right now the $118,000 for local match, we could drop it down to less. But in the first year, that'll take some time, just because they'll have to get those staged out. They're kind of surprised that we weren't going out there and doing that. But again, it's not like I can go knock on doors all the time and do something like that in my spare time, because spare time is not that spare. So this, the management of it could do better. And they're coordinated, of course, they have the mobility coordinator for the county, that's Lance Rep, who's in charge of actually working with the, trying to get a system out there. Chillicothe, interesting enough, is about 22,000, I believe, population. They have about 18 buses. They actually operate within and without the city limits, and they seem to do okay. They're under the same federal grants. They are chucking money in because, again, it always loses money. So these are the, these are the issues right now. So there are going to be some behind-the-scenes changes in terms of the actual structure of the bus service. We'll probably try, again, try to get a better counting of where we're going to go. I'd like, again, the capital will be eventually to get a different-sized bus. Most of the size buses have been driven by McDonald's, saying, "We like this bus. It works for us." And it does, 90% of the time. But if we're talking about enhancing our diversion system or even changing it so we can be a little bit more flexible, you know, talk about, go ahead, sorry.
I was just going to add that that's the very thing I think would help, is allowing some flexibility. When we have a large bus traveling around town, and occasionally, I've seen them with two or three passengers on them, and to be able to use a smaller bus, it's more efficient. I just also wanted to thank you, the mayor, and Charlene, for all the work that they do and for working and seeking, working with the consultant that's helping us. And she comes with a lot of experience, both large and small communities, and we can draw on her expertise and utilize some of her recommendations. But it's really the city administration that sought, and Lance Rep, the mobility manager, who sought that information and the consultant out, and I think it's, will benefit us.
Yes, and we've worked with Ms. Lakota before. She was the one who helped us draw up the RFP for the intercity bus system, the ones to Cincinnati and Columbus. Again, this is just to, so we have some expertise to say, "How do we write a request for proposals that fits?" If you remember, I think it was 2006, I think, we also had a consultant come in, or I think it was around that time, even before then, because I don't know if I was on council at the time, but they came in and looked at our routes as well. Again, this is a free technical service that ODOT provides us, so we can, you know, sharpen our skills. At that time, they actually recommended combining the bus systems within the city, for the university and all the bus systems. There was kind of a pushback on that. There wasn't really acceptance of that. But I'm aware of the fact that there is a, there is some motion going towards trying to combine bus systems with the university. I think there's somebody on Senate, Student Senate, who's been talking about that, at least last year, and how to make a better system is what we're looking at. How do we combine all the different, so there's not a lot of redundancy and better coordination? So there's a discussion that's going on there. I don't think, again, that would, any route changes requires, or any changes of that nature requires a public hearing. So you'll see me in front of you again for that. And really, it comes down to, is the shared service is that an improvement? Will it save money? Will it give better service? And will it fit the needs of the students if they're going to be paying into it, too? Because it has to fit everybody's needs.
You know, I'm going to make a quick announcement for those that have just come in in the last couple of minutes. What is going on right now is a public hearing regarding the Athens Transit System. We do have a sign-up sheet that I, David, if you could send that around one more time that we'd like to ask everybody to sign. It's just something that you do when you come to a public hearing. If you didn't get to sign it before, please sign it now.
Let's just have public records so we know that somebody was here.
Yeah. Paul, the other thing, I know it's real easy from a funding standpoint to shoot holes in a system like this when you have budgetary constraints, but I think we should let everybody know that the vast majority of this money comes from the federal government. This is not money that, if we didn't spend it on buses, we would have to spend it on police.
Yeah, it's looking about $314,000 of this is going to be from the state and the feds. Sometimes we get a little more, sometimes we get a little less. The actual, if you read on section H there, it talks about eligible state assistance. This establishes eligibility. Actual funding will be based on the amount of state funds available for distribution. Did not enter any more than you received last, and it stops there. Obviously, they didn't have it wrapped around. But last year, it was about $95,000. So the state's giving us $95,000, where the feds give us about $219 or $230, somewhere in that range. And again, this is why, when we start talking about the fare box, it's such a small component, and it's taken out at the front part. If we actually say we're going to get less, or we might be able to increase ridership, but in terms of funding, we could, it would make, it'd pretty much be a wash at that point, because that would add into the deficit side of it, and we, and they'd end up paying a little bit more. Again, I'm looking for inspiration from HAPCAP, because it sounds like they're running a tighter ship up in Logan, although it's a smaller system. It's a different one. It is on-demand. But again, it seems to be they can balance the books much better, and the city of Logan's actually throwing some less money in, from what I'm told. And again, I'm getting this through them, so I need to vet it eventually, too. The questions?
Yes, Member Colesney.
Thanks. Just a couple of things. Do you know what the ridership is per year?
No, I did not bring that with me. It's, no, I don't.
It's been going up, though, right?
It's been, it's been stable, I think.
Pretty stable.
One of the components we, is lumped in there as many times as the summit component. They subtract that out. Last couple of years, when I had courtyard in, it was quite high. So we did have a drop once we lost courtyard to the university. But I don't know, remember the numbers. Do you remember them?
I don't remember the ridership. I do know that there has been a slight drop since the fare increase, but not as much as McDonald anticipated. So we've not seen as much as some other cities decreases in ridership.
Drop in ridership and no increase in overall revenue.
Well, yeah, Lou Meyer of McDonald's says when you increase a certain percentage of fare, you get a certain percentage of drop of ridership. We did not get that much because I suspect what you're seeing is most of the people riding it need to ride it.
Yeah.
It's not like they have a choice. They just had the flexibility. And really, $1.50 fares for a single fares. We have 30 card punches. We have 90-day, we have 180, we have a year. So you, and those are bargains. Those did not go up as much when we did the fare increase two years ago.
I'm sorry, Member Colesney.
So that's, pardon my second question. Good Works on their email list, and one of the urgent needs that they usually post are bus tickets for the homeless that are living on their, at their property there. Is there any reason why the city is unable to simply give some of those away to those types of nonprofits in the city?
Well, you know, I'm going to be asking along the way for about $118,000 there.
Be real careful.
I know I have the NAMI and Gathering Places requesting a bus for their walk-to-walk so they can get their walkers back from the ridges, I believe they're going to end up at. And so I've said, yes, we'll make a bus available for them, which means it costs us money, $55.60 an hour to run it. So we do have, we do help. The question is, how much can you afford to help? Again, if, if they're handicapped or disabled, they could get half there. The bargains are, you know, I would suggest for people to contribute for Good Works. I know they send out the flyer, too, saying everything from, you know, coffee filters, toilet paper, to batteries, and bus tickets are the same. But again, how much can we, you know, give away at this point? My biggest worry is that we're going to have a suffered budget crunch, and I know Nancy would probably agree with me that we have to look long and hard what services we're going to have to, you know, to not extend as much. And that's the issue there. We can probably cut down hours. Somewhere along the line with the reduction of hours, though, the cost doesn't go down because they still have to be here and operating. In fact, really, our dollar amount that's calculated for our bus service is actually calculated with the addition of Summit, because they, so we're both getting bargained. Summit's getting bargained because if our bus system wasn't here, McDonald's would not be servicing them. And if, they're about 2,000, 3,000 hours' worth of time. So it's like, it's like us buying gas from the university. We've got it in volume. We save money in volume. Same thing with the action of the bus system. But again, it still costs money to run. And it'd be nice to say, "Let's do this," but again, how much can we afford? It's like yardage. Nice thing to get rid of and do, but, you know, it costs money.
Remember being the Jewish?
No, no, he was asking, I said, "They're still mad."
I know, yes. Well, you know, that's the thing. We can offer certain services, but there is a cost to all those services. Extended hours on operations. I mean, almost yearly, there are people saying, "Let's extend the time of the pool." But if you look at the numbers, the pool swimming goes down quite a bit once school's out, and then we have to hire new, all the high school kids and all the lifeguards and all the college kids are gone. So, you know, well, how do you, how do you run the pool? I think, I think, which Capitale tells me, what, $200 a day without staffing to run the pool, just to circulate the water, $800 with the, with the lifeguard and staffing and the concession stand. So that's, that's the number you have to make. How many people do you get in the door to do that? At five hours a pass?
And when you might have four or five in a day, that might not be. Member Mysley.
I'm looking through my Athens Transit file and found some numbers, ridership numbers from 2010.
Okay.
Now, that's at the end of the year. In 2010, we had city passengers total for the 12 months of 60,301, and the summit passenger ridership was 116,491. So we had about 176,700 or 800, 176,800 riders.
And I think the things we've got to remember in that, if some of our most vulnerable people is the most, in many cases, lower income, certainly not the summit, but, and are elderly. So, and also, the parking problem that we used to have, and the parking at the fairground is down. I'm not too sure that the bus system may not be playing a role in that, and as OU starts charging for parking, we may see more. So the bus system always seems to, or can certainly play a pivotal role in any solution to the parking issues that have plagued the city for years, so.
I think the Go Bus is probably more a component for the parking, you know, the student parking at this point. I know that they have, every once in a while, have to get a second bus when it loads up on certain days. So that's it. I talked to the people over at the community center there, and they have it on speed dial, they need an extra bus real quick.
Just curiosity, do they, are there buses running to Summit and Courtyard after the bar is closed?
Oh, yes. Well, no, they're on late nights. I don't know what the times are, but they are later than our buses. I think they go at least at 10:00 or 11:00. And mostly for studying, not so much bars. I don't think they're out there, too. But I don't know.
I don't know if that was a real issue among students.
And again, both, both those systems actually are probably coming out of the rental fees and the condo fees. As far as I know, it's not out of pocket. And I see the same thing with University Commons, which has its own bus system. That's it. We literally have four different bus systems out there. Try and combine them, and making sure they work for everybody would be difficult. It is, it would be a job. The best I think we can aim for is combine the university and our system together and see if we can offer transportation to students. Again, show an ID and ride. And there's models out there. There's, you know, there's a slew of them out there. I have to start, I have to really thank Mr. Lockman, who's out there turning up and looking at these things. He's doing, he's doing a lot of work on his own to do this, you know, for Bona.
I wonder how well are we advertising or making it known the diversion of the bus system?
It's, as far as I know, it's on the website, it's on the flyers, and it's been increasing. So eventually, it might actually make, make it difficult to actually keep the bus on time, if you could get to that point as well.
And the geographic limitations, it needs to be within, is it a quarter mile?
I think it's three-quarters, actually.
Three-quarters of a mile of the existing bus route? And I know there was a case south of town in the United Apartments, or not United Apartments, but the ones just below.
Right, and that's actually picked up several new riders, not just the one that was the diversion that was planned for.
Oh, good. Okay.
Probably request there, so we were parking on the wrong side of it, and they wanted to come around so they didn't have to cross 50 to get to the bus station on Andover Berkeley area, I think, Andover Court area, from what I was told. I get some of this spillover, and they say this is a problem, so I hear about it.
Member Sam.
Just, I'm backing up. A while ago, you said, I think you said that HAPCAP had answered, had replied to a request for an RFP from us?
RFQ.
RFQ, so they already are showing interest in, in taking this management?
They are the only ones who showed interest.
Okay. And did they name a price?
We're working it out. We're working it out. They have to crunch some numbers and look at what we expect them to do. And the big expectation is probably similar to what they're doing in Logan, except probably more so. And then one of the dialogues is whether they want to have somebody on site, in other words, at the bus garage to actually monitor it better, which means we have to find a location. And really, what we do is be paying for a person, a coordinator from their side. Right now, some of the administration money goes to Charlene for her covering those activities. If anything, if I recall, when I did the 2011 budget, I had budgeted a executive secretary in there, but I never filled that. So there's probably some money in the 101 still that could be used if we haven't soaked it up doing something else. But again, so we can always transfer something into that pot of money.
Okay.
So they don't really have a number. And I think, again, the structure of how we do the next contract's going to change. We were looking at...you know, they're looking at it and saying, okay, you know, they're charged by operating hour, a revenue hour, which is really when the bus is roughly running. Not so much the transfers of the bus to and from their garage. But that really doesn't give us a good yardstick of how well the ridership is.
Seeing that it is about 7:30, if there are no other comments, we need to move on into a regular session of Athens City Council. Code order this regular session of Athens City Council. We do have a quorum with all members of council present. Item on our agenda, disposition of minutes. I have the regular session of council held September 6, 2011. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes have been accepted. Under Communications, I do have one Licker permit that is transferring from Territory Junction, Inc., doing business as Junction, to Courtside Pizza, Inc., and it's at the same address. Basically, it is just a change of ownership. Are there any other communications? Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to acknowledge to the general public that we...many of us on council received some concerns about dilapidated housing and issues regarding the upkeep of some of the housing in the community, so just wanted to make that present and aware.
Yes.
There has been discussion.
There certainly has been. A lot of emails, been going back and forth, and all of us have been privy to. Very good. Thank you. Any other communications? Yes, Treasure, Mary Ann McClure.
Mr. President, I'd like to present for the second quarter.
Why don't we do that under the next item on our agenda, Reports and Communications from Other Elected Officials? And let's start with Mary Ann McClure, Treasure for the City of Athens. So given the amount that they are handing out in interest today, I'm sure we're getting rich, and you've solved the budget problem for us. Is that correct?
But I am glad to report, it wasn't the case by the end of second quarter, but by the end of August, we've actually already exceeded the projections for 2011.
Very good.
That's nice.
Do some seedy interest, and I'm working with a representative from Baird to see if I can increase some of our earnings on some of our funds.
Questions from council? The Treasure. Well, let's jump back to the meeting for the mayor, Mayor Wile.
Let's see, things to talk about. Well, let's see, I would request a Finance Personnel Committee next week. Some of the other things, I guess, the only other thing I think...well, two things. One, thank you for coming. All those came for the rip and cutting for the bike pass spur. That was fun. Didn't get rained on, even better. And we had a good pedestrian bike meeting afterwards with some good ideas. The other thing, of course, is the Plan Commission will be meeting this Wednesday, the 21st, 12 o'clock, and we'll be covering in terms of the Communication Section, the assigned task force recommendations, the telecommunication tower ordinance, and I don't think that will be ready for a vote. And the zoning request that was initiated from the northeast...north part of East State Street. We received one about thirty days ago, forty days ago, and we will deliberate that, I believe. So that's next this Wednesday, 12 o'clock here. And that's all I really have.
Questions, comments for the mayor? City Auditor Kathy Hecht.
Law report.
Okay, Law Director Patrick Wang.
No reports tonight, Mr. President.
And let's move on into ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 8511 is an ordinance banning parking and closing that portion of Court Street from Mulberry to Carpenter on October 29th and 30th, 2011, in anticipation of a large number of people converging on downtown Athens Halloween weekend. Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. My perceptions serve me correctly. I'm under the impression that we do need to suspend the rules this evening.
That is correct, since there is not an emergency clause attached.
Okay, thank you. So I am requesting that at this moment.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion on suspension only. The reason for the suspension?
As noted.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules of council are suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move to adopt this particular ordinance, 8511.
Second.
Thank you. This ordinance, simply again as stated, is a ban on parking in anticipation of Halloween, which is stated the weekend of October 29th, 30th, that particular evening, closing Court Street, Mulberry, Carpenter, that general area, and to employ as necessary uniformed members of the Athens City Police Department and other city employees to preserve peace and public order. Thank you.
Other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 8611 is an ordinance establishing a glass-free drinking container zone on Court Street and adjoining sidewalks between Union and State Street on October 29th and 30th, again Halloween weekend. Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I believe this ordinance, as well as the next two, also will need to be suspended as well for the similar reasons as stated earlier.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? All in favor of suspension?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules are suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this moment, again, I'd like to move to adopt ordinance 8611.
Second.
Thank you. Again, a number of these ordinances regarding Halloween have been put together over a number of years of work among community members and the executive branch in determining what's safe, specifically in this case here, keeping uptown free of glass. So again, this is a safety issue, quite simply.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 8611?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 8711 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 1104, vending, peddling, and soliciting, to allow vending in the designated area on October 29th and 30th, 2011. Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I am kindly requesting suspension of the rules, as noted from earlier.
Second.
Thank you.
For all the reasons we've already noted.
Thank you.
Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended. I got out of cycle there. Excuse me.
Thank you. So at this moment, again, I'd like to move to adopt ordinance 8711. This particular ordinance is looking at suspension of the enforcement of the city code on vending, peddling, and soliciting. There are some issues regarding this. If people have questions or interested in vending that weekend to see the code department, similarly, there is no registration fee for charitable organizations, civic groups, and nonprofits. Again, this is a unique weekend, and this is an ordinance specific to just this weekend.
Further discussion on ordinance 8711? All those in favor of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 8811 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Section 1304.10, unnecessary noise in the downtown area on October 29th and 30th, 2011. Again, Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last but not least, I do request one last suspension of the rules this evening.
Second.
Thank you.
For all the reasons we've discussed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt ordinance 8811?
Second.
Thank you. This ordinance is a suspension of the noise issue, noise ordinance, or enforcement of noise uptown during the weekend of Halloween for obvious reasons. Again, there'll be many people uptown. It'd be...
A lot of noise.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. So again, this is simply just a brief suspension of noise on that particular weekend. Thank you.
Other comments? Member Paul.
I'd like to point out that this is an example of cooperation between the student population and the population that comes into Athens for this particular hoo-ha, and the city administration and the city enforcement. So we do work with people. We're not always seen. I mean, we're not always draconian as some people see us. And this is a support of, you know, something that's been long-running.
Yes. And thank you, Member Paul. I might add real quick before the mayor that, again, the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee has worked tirelessly over the years. They've added a lot of organization to this to help make Halloween safer and a little more sane.
Other council members? Mayor Wile.
We would be remiss if we did not add that the university works with us quite closely as well. They have their green jackets out. They spend a good penny patrolling the campus and helping us out, especially on the interface between the campus and student areas like Mill Street. So it's a collaborative effort to, I guess, have a good time and dress up.
Any other comments regarding Halloween? Member Paul.
I think it should be recognized that we spend a good bit of green ourselves, you know, on this student extravaganza. I mean, I think that it's a fair thing to say that this is something that we work together with students, student body, and that we support, and we also spend a good bit of money, so.
Between fifty and sixty.
Yes. And I would like the students to recognize that at some point when they sit there and complain to us about how oh, so unfair we are sometimes other parts of the year.
So there.
That's right. I also live on Morris, and I hear it the whole weekend. So I have to...people have to realize that there's a lot of people who live through it.
Other comments? All those in favor of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? Happy Halloween. Ordinance 8811 has been adopted.
Not yet.
Ordinance 8911, yeah, yeah, okay. An ordinance closing a portion of Court Street on Tuesday, October 25th, 2011, from 5:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. for trick-or-treat hosted by the Athens Uptown Business Association. Member Nicely, we ought to have a big Halloween this year, shouldn't we?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is yet another Halloween activity, and I ask that we consider this under suspension. Second. Okay. And the reason for the suspension is, is that the event is October 25th, and the ordinance needs to be passed in time before the event occurs.
Other comments on suspension? On suspension? All those in favor of suspending the rules on 8911?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules are suspended.
Mr. President, I move for adoption of ordinance 8911.
Second.
Okay. And this ordinance allows us to close the traffic on Court Street on October 25th from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m., and it is an event, as President Byers explained, that's sponsored by the Uptown Business Association. It's been a very successful event that's been held for several years, and lots of young children get the opportunity to come uptown and walk about. So we close the vehicle traffic. We ban parking on Court Street, and then we also allow free parking in the municipal garage during those hours, too, and that's from 5:30 to 7:00. And we also advise anyone traveling uptown during those hours to double your travel time. It's Athens' closest version to a traffic jam.
I think it's a pretty full-blown version of a traffic jam. Member Paul.
I'd like to point out that this event is a whole lot quieter.
A lot younger.
Well, you know, this is the sort of thing...it's family-friendly, and this is the sort of thing that I love to have, you know, the parking garage be free. This is the sort of thing that we support as the city for, and I think it's also a good economic development sort of program because it makes us family-friendly, kind of gets us out there besides doing Halloween.
Other comments? Mayor Wile.
A couple of things. It is Halloween for the little kids. It's working with the town...
We've got to get them in training.
Actually, I'm always surprised how many grownups the parents have dressed up as well. They come as whole battleship groups and all sorts of... And beehives and all the other stuff. A couple of things. One, it is closing the street, and we've just done this for, I think, less than four years. Just because it was getting so popular, it became a hazard. It previously existed. They were having it with the street open and cars, and it just built up, and after a while, it's like there's way too many kids who are, you know, excited and full of candy. The other thing I would point out is this is probably the last time you'll be reading these, Bill.
And as a four-year chairman of the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee, it is more than a little bit...what's the word I want? I don't know. I'll leave it to you guys. Other comments on...we have moved to adopt, have we not, on adopting ordinance 8911?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 9311 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Board of Athens County Commissioners for the purpose of obtaining the services of the Public Defender's Office for the period from January 111 through December 3111 and declaring an emergency. Now on to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 9811 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a lease agreement with the Athens County Agricultural Society and declaring an emergency. Member Nicely.
Yes. As mentioned in our committee meeting last week, this agreement with the Athens County Agricultural Society is up for renewal. It comes up for renewal once every six years, and it's for the parking space at the county fairgrounds. And we are moving towards the renewal of that. It did expire in August, and we are needing to renew it shortly.
Very good. Other comments? Ordinance 9911 is an ordinance closing a portion of Union Street from Court to College on Friday, October 14th, 2011, from 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. for Ohio University's Homecoming Rock the Block event and declaring an emergency. Member Nicely.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, I ask that we consider this particular ordinance under suspension of the rules.
Second.
And the purpose of this is the event is going to take place during homecoming weekend, the university's homecoming weekend, on Friday, October 14th.
Very good. And quite a time constraint. Other comments on suspension only? All those in favor of suspending the rules on 9911?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of 9911.
Second.
Okay. And this particular ordinance was...the details of this were explained by Kristy Gurska. I might be mispronouncing her name, but she represents the University Alumni Association, and for the first time, they are planning an event that will be held on that weekend. It would be from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m. It would...can have an outdoor concert, a beer garden, which will be sponsored by Ohio Brew Week, and also vending. As we understood from the details presented to us last week, the local Athens vendors are going to be the vendors that'll be participating, and I believe for safety purposes, as I understood the discussion, will also be maintaining a 60-foot clearance for the fire lane on the street. So I think those are all the details. This will be taking place in front of the old Baker Center, so it'll be the intersection on West Union Street. And we did receive a map with the details on that. Also during our discussion, since this is the first time that this is occurring, we did urge the Alumni Association to approach us next year in May or June so that we can have adequate time for discussion of the details and any improvements that they might want to make the following year, and we won't have to suspend.
It would be nice to have three readings and opportunity for public input. That's why we'd normally try to have three readings of everything. Halloween, we've done that a few dozen years, so that's not that essential, but something new. It would be nice, but we didn't have that option this year. Other comments on ordinance 99? Member Paul.
We asked that they went by the Uptown Business Association. I'm just wondering if they had done that? No?
I'm aware that they met and presented to ABA last Wednesday, but I do not know the bottom line of it. I did not hear any mayor feedback, or positive, that matter. If it was slightly the case, I probably heard it.
Okay. Does this sort of thing can, you know, impact the...
I take it back. I think everybody thought that there's usually enough people for all the bars and all the beer gardens.
Overflow of bodies.
Yes. I don't think that was...they were concerned about loss of business on Court Street.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Other comments? All those in favor of ordinance 9911?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Onto a one-reading resolution. Resolution 1311 is a resolution opposing centralized tax collection in the state of Ohio. This is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. Member Sands or Member Bain who wishes to address this?
Mr. President.
It looks like Member Sands.
We do...we do move that this resolution be accepted, but before we do...this was presented to us by the auditor, Kathy Hecht. I didn't know whether she had anything she wanted to add, comments?
Well, I think it's pretty...
Well, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, although we're as explain all the reasons why we need to do this. I might just add that I happened to get a call from the Finance Director from Troy, Ohio, who saw my name in the paper and called me to ask about it. They've already passed a resolution themselves. She's collecting resolutions and trying to educate our lawmakers about the issues and burden that the centralized tax collection would have on municipalities throughout the state. So, and as she said, now is the time to do it before it actually makes its way into a bill.
Okay. This is a resolution opposing a concept introduced at the state level for centralized income tax collection. At this moment, our city collects all of the income tax for city residents and businesses within the city, and there are many reasons that it would be better for us to keep control of that rather than a centralized collection at the state level. So, again, I move that we accept resolution R thirteen-eleven.
And Member Bain seconded, I believe?
Yes, and I'd like to, is it okay? Okay.
Yeah, the treasurer's wrong.
Excuse me?
We just have to send it to the treasurer, whoever that may be.
Okay.
I think it says in here to send it to the governor, the treasurer, and local representatives of the Ohio Legislature, as well as Troy, I guess. Is that what you're saying, who to send it to?
Yeah, this voice.
Thank you, Nancy. Without objection, can I ask the Law Director if we can recognize that as a typo?
Okay.
And the court will correct it. Thank you, Mayor Bain.
I see.
It's good to have the right.
Other comments? Are those in favor of resolution thirteen?
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution has been adopted. Onto announcements in other businesses, and other business, other businesses. Committee meetings cannot stop. Member Butler?
Thank you. There's, I'll double-check later in the week with our clerk, but tentatively, we can request a discussion with maybe the Environmental Committee over anti-fracking legislation. So I guess we could fall into environmental, it could fall into a couple areas, planning and development or environmental.
Or committee of the whole, since it goes all so many different lawyers.
It's true.
And, Mr. President, the mayor mentioned Finance and Personnel meeting.
I heard that, yes. Anyone else? Is there any other announcements or other business? Then the last item on our agenda is an opportunity for citizens to speak on any legislative items or city services that we did not cover on tonight's agenda. Welcome, Jack.
I'm Mr. Baez.
If you could state your name and your address, please.
All right, sir. My name's Jack Stauffer, sixty-two Sunnyside, and I'm not a good public speaker. I get nervous when I'm in public and have a real concern, and tonight I have a real health and safety concern. And have had, limited to no success. That's the reason I'm here tonight. For some of you who've been on council for a number of years, the last time I had a health and safety issue, it was a big deal. I was here on several occasions, I was in the mayor's office on several occasions, and I made enough noise until I finally got cooperation because I was right. I'm right tonight. That's the reason I'm here, because I've tried to go through the normal channels, it hasn't worked. So I have one copy of three letters that I have presented to Andy Stone. The first one on April fifth, the second one, after waiting six weeks, on May twentieth, and the third one dated today, approximately five months after my first contact with Mr. Stone. So there's one copy of each of those three letters, and I don't know if you guys want them or not, but I'd like to provide them. Thank you. I also have one copy of each of those three letters for the mayor slash Safety Service Director. I'm here to get the attention of an ongoing problem in my neighborhood. I live at sixty-two Sunnyside Drive, and where the apparent actual problem is, is in front of forty-nine Sunnyside Drive. I've written three letters to Andy Stone, the most recent being delivered by hand by me this morning at eight o'clock. My first letter was hand-delivered by me to his office on April the fifth and got a very limited and non-answer response. After waiting approximately six weeks, I delivered a second letter to that office, and I was, I did receive a phone message back from Mr. Stone later that day saying that he would put my list, my problem, on his list. That was May twentieth. And today, I took him another letter on the nineteenth. For the most part, I've been waiting patiently and quietly until today. After dropping off my letter at Mr. Stone's office this morning early, I expected a phone call. After not receiving a phone call, I thought, well, let me give the gentleman the benefit of the doubt, and I'll call the office to make sure he indeed received the letter. So I called over there around three-thirty, three-thirty-five, and spoke with Kelly. She said Andy had not read the letter, and I asked her to make sure that Andy would read the letter before the end of the day. She said she would. I believe she indicated to me he was in the office, but never offered to let me speak to him. So I would like to bring to the mayor, Safety Service Director, council, and public the problem that we're having. We have rats in our neighborhood on Sunnyside Drive. I'm going to take another minute and read you a letter that I wrote to Mr. Stone this morning so you can get it in context. The first two letters, I believe, are rather polite and businesslike. This one is, does have a bit of an edge. "Well, it's now been in excess of five months since I contacted your office, April fifteenth, letter enclosed. I rated what I can see on May twentieth. You did call my voicemail and left a message that said you would put this work on your list. Now it's been nearly four months since my second letter calling this gross and unsanitary problem to your attention, and no response." Again, letter enclosed, a copy of the second letter. "Every day, several times, I walk the street with my small dogs and my flip-flops on, being cautious to keep an eye out for rats. Andy, this is bullshit. Excuse me, but please, get the point. Since my last letter to you, the house at forty-nine Sunnyside, which is the house that has the sinkhole, that has the rat holes where the rats enter and exit. I've seen them with my eyes. It's not an imaginary problem. Since my last letter to you, the house at forty-nine Sunnyside has been sold, and we have new neighbors, Tom and Angie with their daughter Abby. I did not call this problem to the attention of the new owners because I did not want to scare them. I kept thinking the crew will show up. Well, I was wrong. Yesterday, Tom, the new neighbor, stopped me and told me of what he saw in his yard in broad daylight, which was rats. I then explained my efforts of April fifth and May twentieth. I don't think he was impressed with the results of my efforts. I guess I am finally wondering what is it going to take? A rat bite and a lawsuit, or me at city council on a Monday evening? And I signed the letter and put down my phone number. One would think with the tone of that letter that I would get the courtesy of a returned phone call. I don't appreciate me and my neighbors being ignored on what I believe picture this on your street or in front of your house. It's at least an unhealthy and creepy feeling walking by rat holes every day, not just for me and my girlfriend, but for the kids playing in those yards and sidewalks. Apparently, we're receiving no to poor service. I'm sure the war crews would locate and repair the problem if dispatched and properly supervised." Does anybody have any questions?
Thanks, Jack. I, we generally do not do a back-and-forth with comments.
That's fine.
I'm sure you can understand it has to do with a lot of, you know, I have no doubt.
I understand everybody's covering their little area and territory and so on and so forth, and I'm not going to address that. I've got one more sentence.
Okay.
Maybe tomorrow morning, the mayor, Saber Surf Director, Anne or Andy, could make some real progress and address this.
I have no doubt that you've gotten everyone's attention tonight.
Well, I'm sorry it came to that, but April fifth, May twentieth, September nineteenth. I'm not a patient person by nature, but I feel that I've been pretty darn patient this time, and I'd like to see something happen in a prompt, orderly, and professional fashion. I will be surprised if you don't. Thank you, Jack. Is there anyone else wishing to speak before council tonight? Yes, come on up. Again, state your name, your address, and you're welcome to speak before council for three minutes.
I'm Abraham Alasoff, P.O. Box two-three-two-three, Athens, Ohio. I'm up here tonight to talk about, Congressman, Councilman Butler was talking about environmental problems. I'm not exactly sure what the fracking, but we have a environmental problem that's been going on way longer than fracking. It's city water fluoridation, and it's a problem, and we have started referring to it as fluoride, it's hexafluoric acid, or what on the city's MSDS sheet says, fluorosilic acid. It's not only an economic hamper on the city of around nineteen thousand dollars a year, and it also is causing corroding to the machine that ministers it. You can ask any of the employees down at the city water plant, and they'll tell you the same. It's just a conflict of interest for them to mention it, but they'll be glad to tell you in person. Also, the health concerns, there have been, the CDC just here recently, last October, the Center for Disease Control was saying that city water fluoridating was causing dental fluoresces in children, and they recommended removing, lowering the amount from one-point-seven parts per million, or one-point-two parts per million to six parts per million, or point-six parts per million. And also, the history of it, for those who may not know, I mean, the city, the citizens of Athens, twice in the sixties and once in the early seventies, voted down water fluoridation, and not until either, I think it was nineteen ninety-nine, city council when it lamed up, four-three, voted it in. I've been hearing a lot of the reason that you guys cannot take it out is an EPA mandate, which I have yet to be, I've called the EPA three times and demanded to see it somewhere in the ORC or some other legislation they've not been able to produce. If I'm not mistaken, Law Director Wang had said that he was going to look it up at one point, but never, never really heard much back from that. And with that precedent, Yellow, with the precedent here in Ohio, which has blown that out of the water, Yellow Springs, Ohio, has repealed it in a village council vote. So I don't see the EPA telling Yellow Springs, Ohio, they have to put it back in the water. So I just wanted to have that on record. Maybe you guys could introduce a referendum to at least put it back on the ballot for the citizens to vote on, because, I mean, three times they have voted it down. Maybe we could at least give us the benefit of the doubt of voting four times to get it out instead of having city council speak for us. So, thanks.
Anyone else wishing to name and address, and you're welcome to address council for up to three minutes.
Yeah, I'm Dane Waller, and I live at one-five-five Morris Avenue. And I'm here today along with Abe, a public health concern in fluorosilic, fluorosilic acid in our water supply. Like he said before, Yellow Springs, Ohio, has removed it, so obviously, the EPA has no mandate for that. And I'd like to say that this July first, this year, the League of United Latin American Citizens has condemned fluoridation as a civil rights violation and passed a resolution opposing the practice of water fluoridation. And this is a quote from Henry Rodriguez, the Texas chairman of the LULAC. "This is about forcing us to be medicated through our drinking water without our consent or full disclosure of the risks." He's exactly right, because right here, I have an MSDS sheet straight from our water department. This is what was the fluorosilic acid that was put in our water supply last year. If I just flip to the health information here, symptoms of exposure, liquid or vapors can cause severe irritation and burns, which may not be apparent for hours, can cause severe irritation to the lungs, nose, and throat. If swallowed, can cause severe damage to throat and stomach, chronic. Prolonged exposure could result in bone changes, corrosive effect on mucous membranes involving ulceration of the nose, throat, and bronchial tubes, cough, shock, and pulmonary, indemia, fluorosis, coma, and death. My argument is, if there, this is the data sheet for a chemical that's put in water, and that, these are the effects. Why is this even in our water? It's obviously a toxin. This is straight from our water department. This should not be in our water. I advise all of you to take a look at this. It shouldn't be in our water anymore. The time has passed for that, and like Abe said, it's costing us money. There's no reason for this to be in our water.
Anyone else wishing to speak before council? Yes, sir.
Hello, everybody. My name is Toran Jacobs. I live at eighty-one thirty-three Dewey Lane. Thank you for speaking, or listening to me speak today. I'm also in support of the referendum for banning water fluoridation in the city of Athens. There really is, they gave you the great scientific data and numbers for you, but I want to give a more logical appeal. There's no reason to fluoridate our water supply. They say it's for tooth decay, but we already have fluoride in our toothpaste, which does a great job of that. We've already seen that, the main problem with water fluoridation is overexposure to fluoride. We only get enough exposure to that from the fertilizers that we use, industrial runoff, and pesticides. So, sorry, I'm a horrible public speaker, but, yeah, there's no reason to do that. Because we're ingesting the fluoridated water, how does it help our teeth if we're ingesting it? We brush our teeth with toothpaste, we spit it out, it goes in the sink, don't worry about it. But ingesting something that has been known to cause arthritis, osteoporosis, hyperactivity known as AHD, and also other brain-damaging effects should not be ingested in our bodies. Like I said, fluoride is about tooth decay, it's in our toothpaste, it's in our mouthwashes, we all have good smiling teeth. It has no reason to be inside of our bodies. It causes way too much harm, and data has been out there, and it's a published data has been out there to show how much damage it causes internally. So, like I said, we have a big problem with children with ADHD, and recently, listened to a scientist talk about the links between ADHD and overexposure to fluoride. So, I say this for the citizens of Athens and the people and the students here, I think it's a great public health concern that we ban this substance from our drinking water. It's undemocratic to have it in there without the people's consent. So thank you for very listening to me. Sorry, I'm a fast talker, but have a great night.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name's Dane McCarthy, and I live at nine-nine-three-zero Montserrat Road, Millfield, Ohio. And I also wanted to support the other gentleman who talked about water fluoridation in the Athens water. And that would be because several European countries have already banned fluoridation, and we've seen, we see it happening more and more around the United States, not just in Yellow Springs, but in other municipalities. And the reason partly being the expense, and the actual health benefits have been proven to not come as a result of adding fluorosilic acid to the water. The term fluoride is a very broad, general term. You have calcium fluoride, and you have sodium fluoride, and it covers a whole range of very, very different chemical compounds. And the addition of the hydrofluorosilic acid to the water is not, has been shown to not have any health benefits at all, and can indeed contribute to- to not have any health benefits at all, and can indeed contribute to things like osteoporosis. It's not the only cause of osteoporosis, but some people think that it strengthens the teeth, but it actually doesn't. I think there was a study, there was a finding about a hundred years ago or more, in which people who had natural fluoridation in the water, they had better teeth. And this has sort of been used as a springboard to, to launch this program, probably with the best of intentions, but the toxic waste from chemical plants is now being used, added to the water. I have a, something I found, just one paragraph, it's very brief, it was actually in today's New York Times, which I happened to run into by accident. The name of the article is Angry Over Pollution: Hundreds Protest at Chinese Factory. This is, and this is one paragraph. According to Chinese news reports, residents claimed runoff from solid waste laced with fluoride and improperly stored at the plant had been swept into the nearby river after heavy rainfall on August twenty-sixth. They said that a sea of dead fish rose to the surface, covering hundreds of square yards of water. Pigs whose sties had been washed with river water also were reported to have died. The state-run China news agency reported that government inspectors later found that the water contained ten times the acceptable level of fluoride. So fluoride is a very toxic and very dangerous substance, and it should not be added to the water. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing known and having addressed all items on our agenda, we stand adjourned.